All right, good morning, everyone. If you're right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Todd County.
That was Todd, right?
All right, we'll start with the public comment period and it doesn't look like we have anybody from the morning. So we will move on. Next item is our special meeting agenda and we want to add.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had a crossing of the wires regarding scheduling this morning and so we're going to move one of the items that was on our our special work session, the discussion regarding potential changes to zoning regulations related to solar and wind projects to this agenda.
Crossing the wires.
We crossed wires.
No, no pun intended. All right, I will look for a motion on the amended agenda.
Move to accept the, move to approve the amended agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredeis. Is there any further discussion on agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. And good morning Greg, we'll walk into a discussion on solar and wind.
You'll get a chance to look at your D A.
Yeah.
This is kind of, I'm not sure exactly what you're kind of looking for, but you've got my sheets on kind of our comparisons to other counties. You can kind of look at these Excel sheets here, how they compare to other counties. And that stuff, and all the regulations. So I'm not sure, is this discussion basically been, is because of the Excel power line coming through and it's going to possibly happen in the future? Is that why this is the main reason for this is?
Yes, and we had had discussions before, as you recall Greg, prior to even Excel where we wanted to discuss and consider some ordinances.
So I threw out some stuff at Excel, kind of asked them about what does this mean with this power transmission line coming through and substations? Possible substation is going to happen, K and E Meeker area, because they're about the halfway part, this is a big one, it's going to support that transfer station. So I threw a couple of questions at some contacts there. What does this mean for expanding the existing smaller, like wind farms, solar stuff in our counties or K and E white counties? And their basic answer to the substations that's going to support the big transfer line, they will not be tying any additional solar and wind into that system. That's going to be a standalone system just for that transmission line. However, at the same time, they just sent out some of your landowners, maybe they only sent out letters to landowners inquiring on land, it's possibilities that they're wanting to lease renewed solar and wind in this area, K and E and Meeker specifically, as well as others. So with that, they're soliciting landowners to put in a different substation with different capacities for expanding solar and wind in this area. This county area is what they're doing right now. And this is going to take what I understand from talking to a little bit too many boardisters. Put out the feelers now, and see who's interested and the next year they're going to kind of contact those owners, how interested are you? Their ideas lately, I talked to another gentleman, is that now, like we used to put up one megawatt systems, that's very common. They would like to ideally have one L N order connect to like five megawatts. And that cuts down on their infrastructure, where they're going to tie in this stuff. Ideally, they still like the Grove City corridor and the Dassel corridor, because that's where their main lines run right now. But they would like commitments rather than one megawatts to like somebody leasing forty, fifty acres out of crack.
How many, is there an average, so is it so many acres per?
Right now, it's seven, eight acres per one megawatt.
For one megawatt, so if they want five, they're looking at forty acres.
Well, uh, and actually, the sites get a little smaller as you get up because, like an eight acre site is one megawatt, but that's also the perimeter, so if you, as you, thirty acres, you can probably get five in, five megawatts. So all of those, or I shouldn't say all, but the majority of the solicitation letters come out now are five megawatt. I mean, it's kind of, with the legislation and the tran- and the new lines and stuff, it kind of upped the game. I mean, we're seeing letters from Chicago and out, out state areas.
Apparently, that's their break even point, the five megawatts, they can make a lot of money if they can hook one five megawatt and then piece meeling one watt, megawatt here, one megawatt there.
Forty acres is pretty much minimal.
Dassel, what do you mean the Dassel corridor?
The corridor, you know, that runs through Dassel up to Kingston up through that way. That's why all that activity in the past has been in that area. The three, one megawatt is at the south of Dassel, two, three, we approved three, and then the one up by Kingston that they approved, it never happened. There's a corridor up in there, they want to be very close to that corridor that runs up to that, like Highway fifteen corridor. Just like the Grove City corridor, there's one that runs basically from,
Cosmos, it comes over from Cosmos, shoots up to four, and then shoots up north to Grove City and then angles out.
This is, that's why I have so much interest in those two areas, and only those two areas. If you notice, they haven't really wanted anything out of those, they have a lot of Grove City corridor, the Dassel corridor, because they want to be close to the main infrastructure that's already in place.
Sorry, they?
I didn't know there was a corridor there, I had no idea.
I knew the, the, Mr. Grove City, but I didn't know anything about the, the Dassel.
And that's why, that's why, actually that corridor runs up to the south side of Dassel. Remember, the Dassel took action a couple years ago in Anaxton area, that corridor runs right through that Anaxton area, right next to it.
Gotcha.
And that's with existing infrastructure, right? That, that's not related to the new transmission.
Yeah, not to the existing. That's why, pardon, these five megawatt deals, that's why they, Steve, Dr. Mr. Bueller, I think I've said, he's very interested in that. Forty, fifty acres leasing to him, and they're also invested in somebody else, other people in that area that put five megawatt systems.
So they do, so they do a lifetime lease?
No, it's usually twenty to twenty-five years.
Twenty-five year lease, and they give them so much a year or something?
Eighteen hundred, two thousand bucks an acre. They're making really good money on that.
Wow, so they're taking, obviously, they're not taking tillable land and doing this.
Oh, no, they, oh, yeah.
All are taken.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because it's the easiest stuff to actually put.
Why would anybody do that?
Uh, because they're probably not farmers, maybe they inherited the land, maybe, you know, all kinds of.
I mean, people are free to do what they want, don't get me wrong, but it surprises me that they would take good land and.
Well, if you get eighteen to two thousand dollars an acre rent versus two hundred dollars an acre rent per year.
If you're renting it, if you're not farming it, so I get it now.
Yeah, and it's a lease, so the highest I've seen that I've been solicited was twenty-seven hundred and fifty acres.
Here, I'll let you check, Cell makes off an acre.
Well, we'll never get that number.
Oh, I'm sure you won't.
I tried to get the number.
I'm just asking this because I'm curious.
So Greg, how many of these are they talking, because you just said multiple, and that kind of?
I don't know, they don't know. I think it's up to what they get for landowners to agree.
So you're saying if they had ten landowners who wanted to lease to them, they'd probably put ten of them in?
Sounds to me like they're just interested in one, five megawatt, one hundred and fifty, for now, but I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, and it's all about what they can, what they rent it for.
Yeah.
Because the more you take tillable land out of the process, that affects us all.
Yeah, it makes.
They're buying, uh, green energy. That's, I mean, that's.
That's it.
I mean, it's not return on investment, it's, we're buying a green en- energy infrastructure. And they're going to keep raising the ante into dollars, throwing dollars at it until they get bought. I mean, that's the short answer.
If you notice.
I, I, I mean.
I hear you.
If you notice in the end of my D A, talking about, you know, seventy percent of our energy use could be usually just four, point four percent of agricultural land. Well, actually, I don't think it's a lot smaller.
It is, but then once you start moving the needle, it makes all the more egg, more expensive, because you won't be able to rent any land.
But as you know, the, the government is not allowing coal-fired plants and gas-fired plants. So the only option for the future, when you're showing down these plants, is renewable energy.
Yeah.
And that's after we're going to get a nuclear, nuclear's coming, it's going to come in the next ten, twenty years as well, because nuclear's getting a lot more condensed, what I understand.
Yeah, there's always new technology coming through and new politicians coming through, so that's not always a given too. I mean, that's Minnesota right now. Hopefully, the next generation will be a little different, my mind.
The, uh, that M M D C, they had a discussion the, the one night, and McLeod County, Doug Kruger and myself were sitting there, and they wanted to hire, they want to hire a, uh, green energy, somebody who focuses or specializes more in green energy. And our question was, okay, when we're talking green energy right now, what are we talking about? And they're, well, electric and solar. I said, well, what about soybeans and corn, biodiesel and ethanol, we've been, I said, that's the problem. We, I mean, we've had green energy and it's available to us and it's renewable, and right now, it's not even on those items.
They never speak.
They get kicked to the curb right now, but solar and wind are the thing to talk about. It's like, as long as those two items are in the conversation and the person you're hiring is, is, uh, got some background in, in those items too. But I said, we're going to talk about that before we go hiring somebody who talks solar and wind and we ain't going to talk about corn and soybeans. And agricultural part of the state, you know. So that's the problem, it's, it's more rare.
This half year is kind of existing, what's the capacity is right now, and we're talking about corridors that have. This is from Excel, we've got Grove City down there on the left-hand side, that Antwater Grove City is the main corridor that runs along that side, forward to the left, there you go. And that's kind of the corridor that's in place right now, and there's only about two hundred and fifty kilowatts that's available on that line there, which is, you know, a quarter of a, of one megawatt system, so really, they're not looking at expand on that existing corridor, but on an upgrade of that system. This is what we're talking about, five megawatts. It upgraded the whole line, from Grove City up to Painesville, to handle another five megawatts. Same thing with Dassel, the government is kind of whole, because the corridor on Dassel that comes up to Kingston, the Campbell line out to there, that's only about a quarter megawatt as well of capacity. And they leave that buffer in there for surges and stuff like that, I guess, is what I understand.
So Greg, when you say update.
Yeah.
It's got a. Yeah, don't be too close.
Got echo to it.
When you say upgrade, does that mean they're going to have to replace existing towers with larger towers and more where?
Most of that stuff is underground.
Oh, it is, okay.
Some of it's above ground, some of it's underground. But yeah, that's what they would do, they put a whole new line system underground and above ground to support this stuff.
Next to where these are.
Last, they had a big, certain people probably in the Litchell area said, hey, a bunch of landowners, they didn't make all new corridors on Litchell.
There's a pretty good size substation at Corona's, where they meet, coming up four at Corona, right, right at that junction. There's a fairly large, quite large substation there, and I, I knew the line, the three-phase line going to Eden Valley is at capacity.
Yep, that's that, you see that?
The, the red line.
It's, it's ironic that those corridors are underground, because when we were talking about this major power line, that couldn't go underground.
No, that's way too big.
You know, it is too big for underground.
It's all about what it costs, you know, for them.
If you talk to utility companies, it costs way more money to maintain an underground system and above ground system. Basically, do electrical strikes. Electrical strikes really play a heck with underground systems. If you have electrical strikes on a major corridor line, that's going to be a lot of money to me, so they'd rather have stuff above ground, below ground, and that stuff.
So we're pretty limited in what we can do, right?
I think we're very limited in what we can do, because it's already allowed a number of these systems already in place. Like I said, like McLeod County's been a couple losses, they've lost both.
I see they've lost.
Trying to, so you can't use prime agricultural land, they've lost both. What, what, what can be determined as agricultural land, and one thing they've lost is, you know, another thing is, how can you determine what people can use your land for?
Well, I think that's the tough part, but how does it affect the neighbor, is that going to affect the neighbor's cattle, is it, you know, there's talk about that.
Volting issues that are addressed and that has been a non-issue.
How did?
Well, I, I've read that it has not been a non-issue in some cases.
How did Sterns prevail? Because they prevailed with the agriculture.
Yeah, because they had something in place before, they had that, Sterns County had something already in their orders prior to.
It was, it was in their comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan.
So we can't change anything now?
Why can't we propose that now before the big push? Because what I worry about is what happened to Clearwater area, what happens down to Blue Earth, where they take big prime farmland and turn it into huge solar farms, because my niece's family basically are surrounded by tons of, uh, these solar places. And it basically stops expansion for them, you know, which that.
Stops expansion for them, but it means for other people to have his land, it's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, it depends what your goal is, I guess, you know, my goal is to preserve agriculture more so. I think it's ironic, it's called green energy, but it takes green spots and covers them up with giant solar panels.
I would agree.
Ugly man, turkeys.
If you notice on our spreadsheet, we probably are the most protected, restricted of any county out there for setbacks, we're not owner of residence. We have the, we have the largest setback distance of anybody in the area, which is good.
It is, because you're protecting your neighbors, is which is what I'm kind of protecting, what I'm thinking. But if we could set what Sterns did now, at least before the big push comes, at least we'll be a little more protective, where it's a little more like, okay, Meeker is not really into the whole.
So if.
Using land for green energy.
County Attorney, she will find, if we did that, would we be able to defend that if we were challenged, if we did it now?
I'd like to look at the case law that McLeod County is going through. Are they only at the Court of Appeals level, or did they go all the way up to?
They're done, they lost most of them.
At the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court, are they two different cases? I'd like to look into see what the issues are, because, I mean, just because another county does something, doesn't mean it's the same as what we're operating on. But then I could actually give you good legal advice based on that, and then I'd also like to read Sterns County and talk to them. Uh, but as far as, we worked on these setbacks two years ago, maybe, weren't there other counties like, I remember looking at other counties that had larger setbacks, didn't Wright County, no?
See, my fear would be us, we put something in place and then get challenged, and we spend a bundle of money trying to fight a challenge that we don't win, because we knew we weren't going to win it to start with, so.
Well, yeah, I would not be recommending that.
Yeah.
So are we under a timing issue here, if we table this, or are we going to look into it, or?
When does our plan come out, their final? It was August.
They're, they're submitting, um, their two options to the state next month. But again, we're, what we're talking about here is development beyond that, you know, there's, as we see here, there's already not, um, capacity in these corridors in order to have, you know, additional five megawatt, you know, facilities being constructed. If, if what we find through this process is that the, the reason why Sterns was able to prevail is what was written in here is that because this was already listed in their comprehensive land use plan, we would need to review our comprehensive land use plan to see if we have similar language in our plans from two thousand eight. It, we are to the point where we should be updating it, and we, that's an opportunity then, we could go through an update process, but that process isn't quick. That isn't a two-week turnaround, here's a co- new comprehensive land use plan. It's a process that we should be engaged in the community and in taking several, several months. So if that's the route that we want to go, it's okay, um, but recognize that we should get moving on that, so.
That would, that's what I would prefer, I'd rather fast track it as po- as much as possible, just in case things do start heating up in terms of, just for, because just ironically, yesterday, I was telling these other, I got solicited by a green energy group asking for twenty acres already, so. It's not just, what?
What did you say?
I went right to voicemails, they never called me back, because I wanted a lot of information then, but they're all based out of Chicago, but.
The, the, the comp plan process is more than just this, though, it is all of our future land use, that what we want to see over the next twenty years.
No, no, I understand that, yeah, we need to be looking at that anyway, even though that can't be done in a hurry, obviously, probably.
And that, and that's why it can't be done in a hurry, because we're going to be, it, there's a lot of things outside of just green energy that we would need to look at.
Well, we should have been looking, if it's two thousand twenty-three and we haven't done it since when?
Two thousand eight, fifteen years is not unreasonable.
What is, what is reasonable?
I, I would say, you know, we're, we're.
Some don't do them at all, some just do it once and don't do it again.
Well, that, I don't think that makes any sense, Greg, things change, I mean, you do want to.
We are, we are to the point where we.
Depends on the counties.
We are to the point where we should be looking to update.
Okay.
I had a list of.
One thing you will be, you will be at odds with the planning commission, you have the ones that set the orders. They should want to put a lot of restrictions on it.
Well, we're the final.
You got a lot of agriculture in the planning commission, the people in there, a lot of them are for this.
Well, I, I wouldn't have a problem going to the planning commission and talking to them, and at least relating it from another ag perspective. And our comprehensive plan, and my goal would be to be more ag-oriented in terms of keep that core, that's what Meeker's about. And I have no problem going to the planning commission and talking to them about what I see as a problem, if they are actually on the other end.
Currently, what is the minimum number of acres that a person could lease to such an operation? The minimum.
It depends on what they want to put for megawatts.
Because eight acres is one megawatt. And.
They can do smaller, if you do a quarter of a megawatt, they can do a hundred, forty, four watts.
The, the rules change at a megawatt. But that's why they go.
Can we have, can we have a number, you can do a minimum and a maximum, or can somebody take five hundred acres and say, here you go? That's some of my.
That's my, I'm curious, can, could somebody just?
It's a good question.
Somebody owns ten acres out in the country, can I lease five acres then to a company like this? I, I, I'm curious, what does our county regulations already say?
It doesn't have a regulation.
We, we don't have a maximum or, or a minimum.
It's tied to use.
But there is setbacks, which is the restrictions in itself, though, right? Yeah.
To municipal areas, yes.
Which kind of restricts in terms of how big of areas, unless you're way out in the boon docks and this stuff, you know, which, you know, which I like that language of Sterns, but whether it has any credence in court, that's a whole nother ballgame, because I don't want to waste any money either, like you said. But I would like to.
But they did prevail with that in court.
Because it must have been maybe the ti- it could have been the timing when they had that plan, like Andrew said, versus maybe McLeod did it a little later, I don't know. That's where Brandy would figure that out.
The way the court would look at it, I'm assuming Brandy would be that you're, you're putting in restrictions to keep them out, kind of post-solicitation. And that's, I think, where, you know, where if you had, no, we've had this in place for twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's a different.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure, no.
I know they had.
You can choose who could do what, I don't.
At one point.
I don't know either, I'm sure that's the case.
At one point, they had like a hundred and forty-one megawatt applications out there, I don't know.
You get it by St. Joseph's.
Where we probably got six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Those highway.
I could foresee, um, all along these particular corridors, so if there's a homeowner, I own ten acres, and they're, they're saying, well, eight acres is one megawatt, at twenty-seven hundred dollars an acre for a thirty-year lease, that sounds pretty good. I would, uh, I would sign a contract then for eight acres and they could come in and put up a one megawatt unit, and I would be sitting then with, with a nice income. And I also foresee someone who owns eighty acres, or three hundred acres along that corridor, thinking the same thing, only on quite a larger scale. I was curious, what do we currently have in place, if anything, for regulations? Because we've seen forty acres over by, um, between Atwater and Grove City and, you know, individual homes where they'll put up a few things.
Mostly just setbacks, right, Greg, is that, that's our provision?
And a setback means to your neighbor?
Distance to existing home.
And what is that? Okay, so if I own that ten acres and I can configure eight acres for one megawatt, what is, is it number of feet to my neighbor?
Yeah, seven hundred and fifty feet.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Not to the property lines, though, it's towards the residence, residence.
To the residence?
Exist.
Say your neighbor has ten acres and it's way on the other side, your setback is going to be a lot smaller for your parcel.
Probably have a seven fifty foot setback too. We have a thousand foot from municipalities, so, from city limits, so.
Oh, s- city limits, so that's, that's actually property with mine then versus. And, and like I said, for me, I'm just looking for something that just pushes them back a little bit, but still, landowners own their land, they have the right to do with it, as long as it doesn't impede too much on neighbors. And I do, I have a concern that what can happen to Clearwater, Blue Earth, big agricultural areas that are turning into these solar farms.
So Greg, do you think it would be beneficial to have, say, Danny and Julie come to a planning commission meeting and speak to the entire planning commission as to the direction, and then I just pick Danny and Julie because it'd be, and Steve or whatever.
You can come too.
Well, thanks for all the theory, mine was hypothetical.
But i- if you thought that that would be, you know, might be, you know, a good information for, they could see the commissioner's side of things, as well as, as they're creating this ordinance, or making modifications?
I had a list of.
But they're also going to give you your, your opinion.
Yeah, but, you know, in, in the, the end, maybe there's a nice happy conclusion where we're both see each other's point and moderate what I think, which is I'm probably a little more on the extreme end, you know, versus what they're thinking, you know.
This right now isn't on the radar.
Right, and I want it on the radar.
Because right now, cannabis and dark stuff is on the radar.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So I guess, I guess the thing that we would probably need to know now is, is what is the ultimate goal of the county board? You know, are you looking to prevent significant-sized solar installations to be installed in the county? Are you looking to ensure that there's adequate setback from neighboring property lines? Are you looking to ensure that they're not installed on certain zone types of property? You know, those are kind of the questions.
Yes, yes, and yes.
I, well, I mean, if the answer is that you want to prevent them all, whole scale.
Well, you can't.
Can't do that.
It's not realistic.
So then, then we get into that question of, okay, what is adequate setbacks? Do we feel what we have today, which is the most restrictive compared to our neighbors, is that adequate? Or do we want to do something more than that? Um, or do, and then do we start, want to start looking at types of, of land, right? We can look at, you know, our zoning regulations deal with agricultural, residential, commercial, and industrial, right? So unless we want to create a different type of zoning district, or, I mean, I'm sure there's maybe some other ways to further break it down in certain areas, um, we can explore that, but that's kind of the question, right? Do we, do we want to further restrict it in certain zoning districts? Or do we want to just ensure that there's adequate distance from neighboring properties?
I had a list of questions, I'm wondering if you can give me the short answer to these. Excel's land use, did they purchase land up by Becker, do we know?
They will, I think that's an option that came out in a letter to people who solicit, I think, either or, lease or purchase.
Because. I was wondering how much an acre, I had been hearing just, you know, ridiculous dollar amounts, and I was wondering if that was even true.
Substations, they purchase the land for their substations, I know that.
To the tune of like twenty-five thousand dollars an acre.
Oh, shit, oh, boy.
Oh, my goodness. Um, and I have been receiving letters, we've been talking about phone calls and letters, asking if we're interested in either selling or leasing, you know, up to forty years on a lease. I'm curious how this will affect taxes, how is that kind of land then taxed? If it's no longer agriculture production, is it then still considered?
It's different, I can't speak to that exactly.
I can give you a rough, that they, it gets its own legal description and it becomes commercial. And it becomes commercial.
Okay, commercial or industrial or what is it classified?
And then it gets taxed at the commercial rate, and the solar company has to reimburse the property owner the difference. So, cause it's, cause the lease. The property owner is gonna pay the, the agricultural rate. And then, but that site, that eight acres out of your twenty or whatever. Is gonna be taxed at a rate that's commercial, and the solar company reimburses the landowner the difference between the ag and.
For their taxes.
So the county will actually do better in taxes?
It's commer- it's.
Cause it's commercial versus a.
They will, um, then.
Better, what I, what I would say is that it, it shifts the burden of the tax, you know, compared to other taxes.
It shifts the burden of the taxes.
Is it still considered homestead? Can I still homestead that piece of?
No, it's commercial.
Um, so it would be.
Commercial is two or three times the rate of ag, right?
Because there's agriculture, it wouldn't be recreational, it would be industrial.
Barb, do you, and maybe you, there's also production tax on it then, so whatever municipality, township. The municipalities, wherever it's located, whether it be in the city limits or township. And the county all get a percentage of that production.
Eighty percent county, twenty percent township.
On the production tax.
At a certain, uh, certain level, a certain maybe level.
Could the land be classified as CRP?
No.
You know?
That's a federal program.
I think Julie's planning on selling her farm.
I sat and just brainstormed, brainstormed questions, I get this stuff, I wanted to know, can you still CRP it? Could you put in, you know, um, pollinator, can you, can you graze it?
Part of the CUP, you have to put pollinators.
But with this.
You actually raise cattle or sheep underneath them as well, it should do a lot of these costs.
Couldn't, can you graze it? Can you pasture it? You know, and, and then, my last couple of questions were. Um, is there a height restriction for solar panels? So could you have sheep and goats underneath it? And who does the mandatory cleanup? What if this company goes out of business in fifteen years or something happens, they? What?
It's up to the owner. We don't have, we have decommissioning at seventy-five thousand per megawatt, but we don't have decommissioning bonds for large dairy. Or chicken buildings or anything like that. But pretty much the consensus like on the planning commission says, my land, if I lease it for twenty years, I'm making. Four to five times the amount on the solar than I would for agriculture, and if they go belly up. Another company's probably gonna come in and use the infrastructure that's already there, highly unlikely it's gonna be abandoned, abandoned. And if it is abandoned, the farmer will just reclaim back, reclaim it back to agriculture, it's his land, ultimately. You're still a landowner, you haven't lost the ownership of the land.
But I would think about all of the things that would need to be dug up and recycled and how can you?
There actually isn't that much that gets, they don't put a lot of concrete in.
Angle iron.
Cause I wondered if there would be a.
They'd pull up pretty easy the Bobcat.
Um, they do, um. The, I, I, I believe that our decommissioning bond needs to be higher, I don't like seventy-five thousand is.
We've talked about that before.
It's not ours, one of the higher?
Or is this higher?
Didn't we up it in the last three years since?
We did.
That's I thought.
From what?
We could do that easy enough, I could do that on a fly. You don't have to have, I could go a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand.
What, Sterns? They're much higher.
Yeah, they're based off the wattage.
Explain decommission to me.
That's.
What is this?
They gotta put up a bond to help pay if, if it's left standing.
For cleanup.
Yeah.
No, they, if somebody, they're gonna get rid of it, not use it anymore, they have to have a bond that they're gonna dispose.
They'll help, yeah, okay.
It's only in the event that the property is foreclosed on, or forced to. And as a county, please that.
You know, I don't think we should worry in this particular case whether we are more restrictive than another county or not. I think we need to put our own stuff in play, if we just happen to be more restrictible, then that's the case.
I need to, I think I would like, uh, the county attorney's opinion on some of this before, and I know we have to do it in a hurry, but there's no sense to just try to do something. We absolutely can't do.
But it helps to give some direction to figure out what kind of restrictions we're looking at, cause if it's just adding fifty more feet to the setback, or if it's really just. Finding ways to control a little more.
I think we could put a maximum size in now, and I don't think we'd be challenged if we had like three megawatts or two or something, I think, uh. I think we could do that now, per parcel.
What is the largest solar farm in Meeker County right now? Is the one over by Atwater?
Yeah.
It's by the Turkey Mountains, it's still in Meeker County. Is that twenty acres?
That's one megawatt. The one south of, the one south of Dassel will be three megawatts when they add that. Actually, there's two megawatts there now, south of the city limits of Dassel, with the other megawatt, one that they got an extension for, hopefully it'll be started this year. So that'll be three megawatts, if you wanna get a size perspective on what three megawatts looks like.
So if we did a limitation of three megawatts, no one would be adversely affected right now.
That's what I was gonna suggest, I mean, cause everything they're getting solicited is fines now.
I think it's a clever way to go through it, like you said, have that kind of thing. Like you said.
It seems like everybody I'm talking to seems like five is the maximum, you wanna put new infrastructure, they wanna get to this five.
That's forty acres.
Thirty.
Thirty?
The bigger, more megawatts, the less of a footprint, because you only have one perimeter fence, I mean, you do a. Six acre site, you got two acres or a perimeter, you do a thirty acre site, you got three acres, you know, I mean.
I kinda like that idea, where it's a little more clever, where you have it, have that a max, have a setbacks, maybe a little bit more. Just kinda inch it out a little more, that way the landowner still has their right to do something, because they should. Yet, you're protecting the neighbors, which we should, that's the whole point of.
Be an issue.
Yeah, it will be.
It is an issue, we get calls all the time.
Yeah, you.
Because they've got the letters now, I've gotten some calls on, what does this mean if so-and-so rents out for acres? About a half a mile away, so right now we don't have any rules on that, so it'd be a big distance, but.
So setbacks and size, right, is that what we're talking about here? And then the legal, what kind of legal teeth do we have to change?
What about, uh, uh, do we have anything in? For like trees, they got a perimeter with shrubbery and.
Cause that's so hard to enforce, pulled that out, I think they pulled it out before I took over Kristin, because it's too hard to. Especially with the drought the last three years, five years, so hard to make them, de-vegetation, probably on police.
How about a fence?
If they're good growth going on.
They have to fence them, they're fenced.
Well, yeah, the ones I see, I'm talking.
Well, you're thinking of the one on the way to Wilmer in Atwater, aesthetically, that's.
Yeah, that's why that's, I'm talking about something that looks nicer than that.
Make something that's not a see-through fence, we could do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, a nice. Till we cover up our own waste management area, I don't know if we need to be telling other people. I drive by it every day, it looks terrible.
We can sell that.
Yeah, I know, exactly, now that we don't have STS.
I mean, I think it would be nice if there was some reason, at least, cause that is yuck, going, you know, there, that's a fence, I guess, but that is what I have in mind.
And if you go on twelve the other way, over by Kokato, where they just put in that massive one, that's far enough away from the road. All you really see is the.
Makes a difference.
So, sounds like, do you wanna summarize the directions so that I have a clear understanding?
So, what I'm hearing is that regulations that the board may wanna consider are increased setback. Limiting the size of new solar installations per parcel, maybe three megawatts, increasing the amount of the decommissioning bond. And then, new screening requirements, maybe a privacy fence, um, and then we wanna review the legal proceedings regarding Sterns and McLeod counties.
And our comprehensive plan.
Um, yeah, so, okay.
Might as well update it if you're doing that anything, if there's anything to update.
In the comp plan?
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be at least probably a six-month process to update the comp.
But, uh, does it have to be part of that plan to do this?
No, 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 no.
But we should do that anyway in general?
Project that we need to be working on.
Yeah.
How will this, how will this be any different from when Forestman Farms came? And wanted to purchase so many acres, how many acres did they purchase? And they purchased an eighty, and how far away from a neighbor's piece of property? Did that have to be?
That's set by the feedlot rules.
I think it's a half a mile from resident.
Half a mile for that size, generally it's a minimum of a quarter mile, but for that size to sell, there's a half a mile.
And that was based on number of animal units? Because I'm curious, how will this be different than that type of situation? As far as setbacks and. So that would be.
That's agriculture and feedlot, this is commercial.
This would be different classification.
That's what I. It's just like a housing.
So that eighty acres has to be within. Their facility had to be within that eighty acres to leave a half a mile to the neighbor.
That's good, man.
Sidebars.
Cause I, I don't know how, how an eighty acre sits. Can they, did they build all of those sheds within that eighty acres, so there's a half a mile? Half a mile.
From existing residents.
Were able to do that on an eighty.
But it's two different purposes, correct? Yeah, so. Alright, so, you have a direction, right? Do we need any motions or anything? Do you feel more comfortable about that direction too? Cause you were a little more apprehensive of us at first talking about it.
Yeah, especially when I looked at McLeod's and Sterns and the challenges. Already kinda let the kid out of the bag, with having one megawatt systems and three megawatts, you saw the Dassel, one parcel, it's just like.
Is that Dassel?
Control, kinda put the hammer on.
Yeah.
But, Dassel, uh, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think them are. Cause that was proposed in Sterns County, just north side of Eden Valley too, where they're putting one megawatt sites, but then they stack them. Because it's individual permit, rather than doing a three-megawatt permit.
But we could do something on so much per parcel, maximum per parcel.
Yeah.
I think that's how you do it.
But I mean, that's what they're doing at Dassel, right? I mean, each individual permits, three individual, one megawatt.
But say I have a parcel, and it's. And you divide, you can always split that, so now you're, so. So just because you have a hundred and sixty acres doesn't mean you can't split that parcel, and then also now you have.
But that's where the.
There's ways, there will be ways to get around it, for sure.
We can also look at, you know, potentially a proximity issue as well, you can't have one within the proximity of so many feet or so many miles of another.
So what if you get two at the same time? Applications, which one do you choose first?
It's a good question.
That's what planning zones.
That's meaning it's up more, darn it.
Is the date.
Interconnection agreements are the things that really hold them up right now. Excel itself, getting action agreement to get the power going to Excel, I'm agreeing to take it on, that's the big whole book.
So, the, the direction that Andrew took that we've asked you to pursue, do you see the planning commissioners, or the planning commission?
I don't think they're buying.
Okay, good.
Cause a lot, some of it are landlords themselves, they're like Peterson themselves. They could take advantage of any part of it, I think they would.
When is your next actually planning? October tenth?
Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
You wanna get on the agenda, you get out after the bio digest or do you have to?
All those guys? Those are Holland guys? Are they from Holland? I'll bring a bag with me.
Kinda run out of Sterns, Spain's. That wasn't plugged, they're trying to pull stuff.
I'm confused about what meeting we're on, are we in the work session or?
Same concept, different company.
Tell me.
October tenth though?
If you wanna get on there, I'll put on the agenda.
So if we want to actually get the, this moving, should it be on the agenda then? Or is this an, or should we wait until Brandy gets a little more teeth? What's, what's your?
I think we should do the legal review first.
Okay.
And then we can have, um, a, a, a meeting with the planning commission to start the process, with them to start looking at updates to the zoning ordinance.
That's a great idea. But Beth will be going to that meeting anyway.
I live right downtown, uh, not downtown, but.
Alright, thanks Greg, we're good? Thank you, Greg.
We are a little bit ahead and our consultants aren't here, if you want, we could jump into the, um, the presentations and the folks from Extension, since there's no action item there, it's just information.
That's why I was confused.
I think that's a great idea.
I think that's a wonderful idea, honey, I didn't think of it, but I hinted. I actually, uh, I should be going anyway, I just haven't, just to.
Appreciate it, Greg.
I'll be back, I'll do it, but.
Ladies?
I'll let you know. Bring more chairs up too.
I know that. It's nice to give it, give it different.
So, I'm just gonna start with a few comments, because I was the one a couple of years ago who came before this board. Uh, asking you to support a change in the way Extension does business, uh, in Meeker County. And I won't go into great detail about that, because the educators are gonna do that for you. Um, but you did support that change, and it was a difficult change, because in Meeker, McLeod, Wright too. We were asking for a, a board to walk away from something that was going well. With us saying, but we think there might be a way to do it better. And so today, um, here we are with the new partnership, with Speaker McLeod in Wright Counties. And three awesome educators, uh, that wanted to come here today to talk to you about the work that they've been doing over the past year. And the value the county is getting from this new partnership, so I will be quiet and let them talk about it.
Yep, so obviously, things have changed pretty drastically, um, so back in twenty twenty-one, this was just an idea. Uh, and brought it to the board, you guys were very supportive of it, we were able to welcome Emily into our group in June of twenty twenty-two. Um, unfortunately, the educator that was in Wright County stepped away, uh, for a different position, but then it opened up the opportunity to hire Taylor. As our crops person, so, we're really excited to be able to be in front of you today, fully staffed, we've been fully staffed for over nine months now. Um, and so we've been able to do some things that, uh, we're really excited about, that we really didn't have the opportunity to do before, because. Um, it's really hard to cover everything from ever, from crops to horticulture to livestock and all of the other questions in between. Um, and so now, being able to specialize this is extremely helpful, so we're gonna give you a little idea of kinda some of the background that goes into our programs. Uh, give a little background of each of us, and then one highlight program that we've been able to accomplish this last year. Uh, so, kind of our extension philosophy, when we go out into the community, uh, here in Meeker County, McLeod, and Wright County. Is that we wanna create learning opportunities with people, not for people. Uh, we prefer not to enter a community and say, you need this program about said thing, we wanna bring people to the table, have discussions, and really. Vet the ideas that we're coming forth with, and it's this balancing act, um, and I couldn't help myself but to put a picture of my daughter in there. And this is that Nelson Farm, so just outside of town here, um, to, to help explain this, it's. Um, to, to help explain this, it's starting um, your, your career is you're really building those relationships. Getting to know people in the community, uh, getting people to trust you as to what you can bring to the table. And then if it's of course, thinking about what that direction might be, designing that program and really putting it into action. And then the big thing about Extension that makes us so unique from other companies is that we're not trying to sell anything. We come in completely unbiased, uh, we try to bring as much research-based information to the table to help support the discussions that are being had. And then of course continually try to get out, tell people that we're here, try to explain this new change so that we, we really be helpful. And then a quiet piece of our work that we maybe don't talk about enough is the technical assistance and. Uh, we get lots of phone calls in our office and Emily feels a lot of them. Um, as just people that are, they're curious about what insect is affecting their, their yards or. Um, we've had some about hail damage and what that looks like and just trying to better help the questions that are coming into our office as well.
And just to build a little bit, you know, I really like this analogy is planting a seed, having a tree grow or having a plant grow, um, just because of our work. Um, but one of the, just kind of a step-by-step process, what we go through in Extension when we're looking at building a program. Um, or building a new relationship, so first we kinda look at those local concerns, we go out and talk to people. That was a lot of what the first three months of my job was, was just meeting as many people as I possibly could. Um, and I think we all have done that uh, respectively within our, you know, areas of focus. Um, so determining what we think the needs are and then learning about different programs and partnerships that are already ongoing where we could add some value. Uh, and then the second thing that we, you know, work on a lot is doing news releases, newsletters, radio, just getting information. Um, out to the public about, you know, hot issues, so. Um, you know, having some newsletters where we can get some information out about events as well as topics, so. Um, we did a little um, release about hail damage that, that unfortunately hit parts of our counties. Um, this past year, uh, just to help people understand what the next steps could be, um, and we got some good feedback uh, on that. Uh, as well as some of those formal and also informal presentations, so where we're going to um. You know, maybe field days, things like that, where we can have like a ten minute, fifteen minute out in the field kind of talk. Um, that's something that we also uh, focus on, as well as maybe more formal education. Um, so we get invited to stakeholder events, we also plan our own events, um, so. Right now I'm in the middle of planning the Crop Management Input Seminar, which is kind of my biggest uh, program, thanks to Karen, she built it up. From what Nathan Winter had kinda started, so that's, that's been an ongoing program that I'm um, really grateful to be able to take and. And build on as well for that kind of education, again, bringing that research-based education out to the counties, so. There's a lot of stuff that goes on, on campus from the University of Minnesota. Um, and just being able to bring that out here is something that I think we bring a lot of value to because if. You know, if local educators weren't here, you know, that would be a lot harder to get that work out into, into the counties. Uh, and then the fourth thing would be evaluation, that's a really big um, emphasis of our work as well. Um, making sure that we're doing the right things, we're getting feedback from our programs, in our programs, so. Uh, we get evaluation feedback from our participants, uh, and do a lot of kind of. Um, those, those kinds of things when we look at even our like year-round work. And then I mentioned this a little bit in my previous slide, but a lot of the partnerships and opportunities that we have been building on. And I would say that this list has expanded with this tri-county uh, agreement because. Um, you know, we've been able to hit some of those um, those partners that maybe we weren't, just didn't have the capacity to do. Um, so like crop advisors, co-ops, SWCDs, um, things like that, uh, as well as some of our county based, other county-based resources, right? Like Parks Department, Emily's doing some amazing stuff with our Parks Department, um, and doing some of that natural resource education. Um, that I think has, has, you know, brought back some dividends with that. Uh, as well as, you know, things with our dairy initiative, um, our Minnesota Dairy Initiative, excuse me, uh, just, you know, long extensive list. Uh, a lot of groups and Emily will mention this a little bit more later, um, volunteer coordination is also a big value add and so she does a lot of work. Obviously with our Extension Master Gardeners and they bring a lot of value into the county.
Getting into introducing myself, I'm originally from Buffalo, Minnesota. Um, my family were actually dairy farmers for a long, long time in Wright County and. Unfortunately, when I was born, they sold everything, so I kinda got gypped a little bit. Um, but eventually in high school, I found my way back to agriculture and I joined FFA and I had a really great experience there. Um, and that eventually led me into my student athlete career at the University of Minnesota. Um, I was able to play softball, work a little bit and also get my degree. Um, and during that time, I interned with Extension in Sterns, Benton and Morrison Counties. And that really led into my role here, gave me a lot of experience and I also interned with the Minnesota Department of Agriculture too. Uh, when I was down in the cities and so I graduated just last year already, uh, with a degree in ag communications and marketing. Um, and I started right away, um, and I was pretty excited because with my internship, I got to do work with the Master Gardeners. Um, and I really love that part of my job because I love building relationships with them, um, and being there for them. And I serve all of the Master Gardeners in all three counties, so right beside of Meeker, but this is just a little snapshot of Meeker County. They are a very small group, um, but I would say we're pretty mighty, we actually have. Um, some really active volunteers, we had, we had about seven hundred volunteer hours last year and that was the Meeker County dollar impact. Um, is what the state leadership team gives us at the end of the year. And we have some great group events, um, is where our efforts are held. We partner with Meeker County Soil and Water, Water through the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. So they go to different schools around Meeker County, um, they hand out bare root trees that are, are labeled and we have. Um, a little link to watch a video of the Master Gardeners talking about planting it and they give a short presentation. Um, some of our biggest events are Garden Gala and Garden Tour, so Garden Gala is just an educational event during the weekday, we bring in a few speakers. And this year we actually had about two hundred people attend that event, so one of our biggest ever. And then Garden Tour in the summer is another large event as well. In our Garden Tour this year, we uh, had five gardens in the Litchfield area that were um, honored, I would say, to show off. Their different growing techniques to the public, um, and then we also had our Community Garden, which we showcased our self-watering system. Um, and that picture is from there this year as well. And the Community Garden is another huge program too. Everything that comes out of that Community Garden is donated to the local food shelf, um, so we take really big pride in that program.
Alright, back a little bit about me, um, I am not a native Minnesotan, I am a transplant, um, I grew up in a small dairy farming community in Vermont. Uh, I did not grow up on a farm, but we were kind of the only house that didn't have a farm in my area, so I grew up uh, pretty much integrated. Um, helped out with chores, you know, all that fun stuff with my friends that were just down the road. Um, and then I uh, did four H as well, so that was kind of my connection to agriculture as well, I showed dairy cows. Uh, absolutely loved it, I was so sad when I had to, you know, stop when things got too busy and my mom couldn't do it in the summer and it was, it was really sad. I think that first fair was really emotional. Um, and then I uh, I thought I wanted to be a pharmacist, I went to school for biochemistry. Uh, and I liked it, but I didn't like being in the lab, I realized that I really did like being outside. Uh, and then I had the opportunity, amazing opportunity that um, really switched my career and I'd say, you know, I wouldn't be here today. Um, I got to work for a co-op um, back in Vermont, so I got to go out and do weed scouting and nutrient management plan to help. Um, with a lot of that kind of work and just absolutely loved it, I got to do it for two summers and then thought, how do I get to do this as my job? How do I get to do this as my career, so um, my advisors at the time were, you know, you gotta get a little more plant science background, um, so I went and got my masters in horticulture and agronomy. Uh, in California where I uh, used UAVs, so drones, um, to create uh, imagery to look at crop indices. So crop health indices, um, and that was also an amazing experience, but I knew I didn't wanna stay in California. Um, I wanted to actually, you know, move at least halfway back to country and be slightly closer to my family, um, and so I was. I applied for a job at Extension here at University of Minnesota, um, and got that job in twenty twenty, moved to Minnesota in March. So that was really a challenge, it was interesting, um, but started that job, um, I really did like Extension, I'd had some. Um, some exposure to Extension in California when I was working with the, um, the grain specialist there, we did variety trials for uh, wheat up in downstate. Um, and so I knew a little bit about it, so I, I took that job and was working as a, as kind of a regional educator. Um, in agricultural water quality out of St. Cloud and then when this opportunity came up, um, I jumped on it because I knew. I always knew I wanted to do more of the local work, the hands-on, face-to-face interactions that I wasn't necessarily getting um, in the regional role, so very excited. Uh, and then just a highlight of something that we've been able to do this summer, um. We had a soil health focused field day partnered with uh, Meeker Soil and Water, Candy Ohio Soil and Water. Um, to kinda highlight what one of the farms is doing here uh, in Grove City. Uh, so Jay Hekki is doing some um, pretty innovative, some cool stuff, he's, he's interseeding cover crops into corn when it's about this high. Um, and then he's also trying some new tillage techniques, um, he's just kind of looking at his soil, trying to keep some organic matter in there. Um, and just keeping, keeping up the health of his soil, so we wanted to highlight that, we um, were pleasantly surprised by the turnout, we had thirty-nine participants. Um, which was pretty good, sometimes you go to these events and the, the participants are outnumbered by the conservation staff. Um, so we were really happy that we actually, we, we, we over-doubled um, our, our participants for, for staff, so. That was really exciting, um, and we also got um, his mentor, um, who had come down from. Oh gosh, what county? Pine County, I think, had driven all the way down, he'd had a, a mentor that um, that came down and also spoke about how. You know, that relationship of, um, has, has helped Jay uh, in his, in his process, so it was really cool. Yeah, I did again.
Alright, I got some really cute pictures of my kids.
And this happened in McLeod too, you don't know why.
Not hidden, so I don't know what's going on.
It wasn't meant to be. Now we don't have to judge them then.
So a little bit of my background, um, so I grew up in McLeod County, so it wasn't a huge leap for when I um, accepted the position with Extension. But I went to the University of Minnesota, you see a theme here, Dairy University of Minnesota, um. Went down, uh, got my degree in animal science from the University of Minnesota. Um, I worked on a couple of different dairies actually in Wisconsin before coming back to Minnesota. Um, and finding a home with Extension, I too had an internship with Extension. Uh, and it's, it's this, that connection piece, right? We get the opportunity to kinda see what's going on in the community, see where the highest needs are. And really create programs that are designed around those needs. And so I've actually been in McLeod and Meeker County for seven years now, it's gone by quick. Um, and really excited about being able to welcome these two gals uh, into these two communities, especially in them and. Our welcoming me into Wright County too, cause that's a whole new area. So one uh, program I wanted to highlight, which is completely new this year, um, actually Wright. Uh, Wright County is number one for equine in the state of Minnesota and Meeker is number seven. And so I wanted to get our state equine specialist out of campus and out into greater Minnesota, so we tried this program. Wine and Equine, uh, which was a program that was started in the east coast and uh, it's extremely successful out there. And so we tried to replicate it here and you can see we had twenty-one people attend this program and we really tried to highlight some topics specific to horse owners. So there's some federal programs through FSA that are available, uh, the VCPR, so it's but, uh, yeah. Veterinary client patient relationship, um, there were some changes that came down and went into fact in June. Uh, where people can't just go and get prescription drugs that you're running or like you would traditionally, so you have to have that relationship with your veterinarian. Um, and so we were trying to make sure that people were aware and as veterinarians become a little fewer across our countryside, that. That's really important, especially for horse owners that may only see their veterinarian once a year. Um, and then of course managing pastures has been difficult with mid-wrapt and so we wanted to hit on that too. Um, and then of course, we, we like pairing it with, with a winery, just cause it gets them off of their farms, get them into more of a social aspect. Where they can really uh, talk and share some points and so we're really excited about this program, you can see the comments there. Uh, people really enjoy this, we're gonna try to target it not in July, um, in future years, maybe October, November when people. Aren't still riding horse, um, and see if we can uh, really build this program for the future coming years.
Alright, just a little bit about some of our upcoming events that are heard into the county, uh, one of them is an ongoing event as well, we started uh, September thirteenth. We're having Wednesday night Small Farm Startup School, I think we have four or five farms from Meeker County. Um, so it's a kind of a, a farm team is part of the tuition, so each farm gets two people to come in, they work together. Um, they are learning about topics, like county-based resources, livestock topics, of course. Fruits and vegetables and soils and crop, crop management and all kinds of things, so. It's six weeks, Wednesday nights, and then we also do farm tours, so there's three Saturday farm tours, we just had our first Saturday in Wright County this past weekend. I mean, each, each Saturday is highlighting a different county, so uh, Meeker County is coming up next, uh, October fourteenth. Um, and we're, we're going over to three different farms, um, and highlighting uh, the work that they're doing and kind of helping. Uh, these small farms that are in the program to make some decisions about what they wanna do, some of them don't know what they wanna do. Some of them need to make a business plan that they can bring to a loan officer, um, and so that's the goal, we're gonna, we're gonna have them create an ag plan over these six weeks. And they're about halfway there, um, and, and be able to have that plan to then bring to a bank, um, and, and, and execute their, right?
Can I ask a, quickly, what, what is a small farm considered a small farm to be?
So it's, the definition is kind of wonky, it's less about acreage, it's more about um, gross.
Revenue?
Provisions, yeah, revenue.
So it doesn't go by acreage?
No, but most of them are like ten or less.
Fifteen or less.
Yeah, yep.
Yep, some don't even have land, they're just trying to figure it out, they have that dream. And then they wanna solidify it before they, you know, pay eight percent.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So just hoping a lot of them, a few of them had the land and they've kind of tried a few things, they, they wanna understand more options that are out there, so that's another big part of the tours. We're trying to show a wide range of farming operations, um, and help people, you know, use their, their land productively and use it in a way that brings them joy. Um, and also might bring them a little bit of added revenue.
And that gross figure is two hundred fifty thousand dollars or less, it's considered a small farm, that's the USDA definition.
Thank you.
Do you bring wine to this, that's left?
No, no.
They get more participation. They want routine as much.
Go from five thirty to eight, so that's, you know, prime time, but we, we did give a request for ice cream, so we're working on having, how to get ice cream. Um, and we're doing it at the, the DASSL History Center, which has been fantastic uh, to work with, they've been extremely open and inviting, um, and a wonderful. Place for us to have this program. Um, other programs coming up, doing a strip till field day this, um, this Thursday in Wright County in Waverly, so another kind of partnering with the soil water there. Trying to get one in each county, I haven't in McLeod this summer, but that's my goal for, for next summer. Um, and then of course the Crop Management Input Seminar that I mentioned, uh, December fifth, so coming up. It feels like it's coming up to me, cause I have a lot of work to do between now and then, um, and then of course every year we do these farmland rent workshops. To help both landowners and renters, you know, make, get the best decision, um, and so that would be December fourth. Uh, we also have some different programs in the works, uh, Emily works on these pretty much starting now, um, so spring, I know that seems like it's far away. Spring Horticulture Education Days, uh, is coming up as well as we're working on getting some farm transition, um, so stuff from our, uh, our Ag Business Management Team. Trying to get them out here, farm transition workshops, um, we think that that's a need, we've heard that that's a need. Um, as well as Women in Dairy, which is something that Karen has been working on and has been doing pretty successfully for the past few years, so. That's what we've got coming up. And then, uh, just to, I don't know if this has been clear throughout this presentation, but just to emphasize that. Um, this is really a collaboration as well, so it's a collaboration between the counties and it's a collaboration between the three of us. Um, and I think these past nine months have been, it's been really nice to be a part of this team, um, I think we all really support each other. And i- i- it's just, it's really nice to have these ladies that I know have my back. Um, and I know that will work with me effectively on putting together programs, so. Small Farms is one of the programs where we've really gotten to work together for kind of the first time on one succinct program, um, and it's been a joy. Uh, and then as well as the youth education that we work together on, so like bringing our education to our parks as well and their programs. Uh, and Karen and I have kind of had this dream that maybe someday we'll do a four H field day. Where she focuses on the, the livestock health and I focus on the plant health, so these are the things that we're thinking of. Um, and then of course we always support each other where we need it and as you guys saw, we got Farm Family of the Year here. Um, and so that was a program where we got to kinda work together, we each kind of took one county, uh, but then we all supported each other within that process.
So do you know what township they were from?
They're just from Meeker County. We all can take ownership of the lovely family.
Just making sure she would.
It's wonderful, it's all good.
And then to kind of wrap things up, um, the reason why it's been so successful. And then to kind of wrap things up, um the reason why it's been so successful, this partnership, is not only because we're all great people and great teammates. But it's also because we we have a shared direction and a purpose. We get to kind of stay in our lane and focus on what we're passionate about the most. Um but at the same time, we can support each other where needed um and come together, especially through small farms, through different collaborations. With our expertise. Um and it also, we reach more people, you know, with having all three of us. You know, it's not just Karen anymore doing the master gardeners, zooming livestock, crops and horticulture. It's all three of us. So. We're getting to reach more people and having more partnerships. So and it really brings it all together. And so with that. I will leave our contact information up there. Um and we have a monthly newsletter that comes to you via email. If you'd like to sign up there. And then we have Facebook as well. So thank you for having us here this morning.
So Taylor, you have now lived in three climates. West Coast and here in the west. Which one do you like best?
I actually, so I like, I like the winter. So California was not for me. And I kind of knew that going in. I knew it was gonna be temporary. Um the one thing I don't like about Minnesota is the wind. Vermont, where I lived in Vermont, I was in a kind of a valley and I did get some wind, but the mountains really. Actually do a lot of protection. So um I mean, I have to say Minnesota.
So and Karen, you live in McLeod County?
No, I live here in the. It's the perfect intersection. My husband actually works for an implement dealer in Wilmer. And so being that I work three, three to four days a week in McLeod. That's the the perfect intersection.
See, you just beat it because there's a lot of people leaving McLeod moving to Meeker.
My family's still dairy farms in McLeod County. And so I do have a soft spot and I'm down there quite frequently, so.
So Emily, what position did you play?
I was a DP or DH and then first base too, so.
That's why you showed your picture.
That was the best part. Go up there, hit a homerun.
Let me share where you were when we interviewed you.
Yeah, so when uh when I interviewed for this job, I was actually in Arizona playing softball. So I had to do it via Zoom. Um they they were very. No, I was in the in the hotel. No, well, I was. I had my. I had a sweater on.
Thanks for setting her up, Barb.
They would have asked me to do like a a physical presentation.
That was cute.
Very interesting. Thank you.
So please use us as a resource. If you're hearing things from your constituents that are uh hot topics or areas that we could maybe assist with. Or bring some education to, please let us know. Um I think that's a key spot that we can really play and help elevate some of those um opportunities.
And thank you, thank you, thank you for sticking with us through this transition. I really think that, well, I think you can see it.
Well, and I think, I just think having the office at Fairgrounds, that that atmosphere and office area there has worked well too. This uh collaboration.
And these two don't know what the office was like before, so.
I've heard things.
Yes.
Yeah. And it is nice to work with Cassidy as well. I mean, I, we didn't even mention that. I think we've both worked with Cassidy on some forty four inch this year too.
Kayla too.
Yeah. Phenomenal.
Good team out there. Well done.
Great.
Well done.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Can we take five minutes?
Sure. We'll take a five minute break. We'll take a five minute break.
I'm ready too.
It's more plaster, I think is what it was.
I was up at five, so anytime.
Add insulation. I don't know if this is. That's just in there or what, I remember just going.
Finishing everything.
Got it the whole thing, but it was just like.
What is?
That vision.
This one, Tyler Tomlin. He's watching the dollar signs. He's, one day he's like. This is all you from here. He's like, I can't. He goes, whatever you want to do. The reason we're putting it off is because it was.
Well, they can get deceiving you when you're looking. But yeah, yeah, yeah. So many under.
Mister Chair, we're ready.
All right.
I think, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Well, the five minutes, he's up five minutes ago.
That's what I thought.
I bought four. I don't know if we're writing on brand here.
It felt good to get off.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
Nah, we don't need to.
She was late, jeez.
Executive, administrative decision.
No. We're not. So, I, I'm just gonna turn it over right over to Larry and Jim.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Apologize for, I guess, being late or early, depending what time we're working at. Here to present a, a budget and a summary of the bids we received here weeks ago on the fourteenth for the project. I'll start by just giving a summary of the, of the bids. We ended up with ninety-two bids in the twenty-seven categories. So, we almost three and a half bids per category. One thing to take note, I know, on some of these ones that have a, a value of over three hundred thousand dollars, we targeted soliciting them pretty hard and we almost jumped up to nearly five bids in some of those categories. So, we, we know going into this project that we needed to get this out. We initially sent it out to four hundred and fifty-eight contractors that were in their database. We had a hundred and sixty-one sets of plans downloaded from our plan room. And I was given Andrew updates on the Minnesota Builders Exchange, so this I've do about seven different exchanges throughout the state. The Minnesota Builders Exchange is probably the biggest. Of all the projects that they have, and they were close to three hundred.
Three hundred and twenty-two.
Three hundred and twenty-six was the final number on bid date. There had been three hundred and forty unique visitors visiting that site and they viewed this project four thousand five hundred eighty-two times. And so being number two in the state was pretty big, we were gonna knock off, there was a middle school, I think, down in the Twin Cities that was yielding a more attention than us. But nonetheless, we had excellent coverage. I think the timing of the project, that people are going into this fall and working over the winter, took a lot of explanation too for some of the guys on the exterior side of it. They know that this is not, the addition is not gonna take place till next spring, so we're not gonna try to go through, get cold weather construction and stuff. Well, like I said, we, I think we had very successful bid openings. We did have a couple of packages, didn't get any bids in, coiling grills and the folding panel partitions. Folding panel partition was pretty much narrowed down to a single vendor. That vendor thought this was being bid not publicly, he thought it was going through like a general contractor. And so they had actually mailed their quote, sent their quote off to others that, well, they had nothing to do with them, so they didn't do anything with it. We did solicit a couple of quotes, and so the budgets we do carry over on our, in, in all the folding panel partitions, you can see they're, they're not very large dollar amounts. The coiling grills, it's, it's less than twenty grand. And I know that the folding panel partitions are anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-five grand, but there's some specs that we didn't work through with the architect. So, that's kind of a summary on, on the bid opening, I'll go into the budget. Two, two presentations, the on the left column is just awarding the base bid only, that would be without the woodlands or the police office renovation. The one on the right is the base bid, including alternates one and two. I got a couple of those contractors highlighted for, for a couple of different reasons. There were a couple of contractors who did not pick up the steel detention ceiling work that was in the program space. It was, it was tough to find, but their bids did not include it, and so we did have some contractors send us a, a letter withdrawing bid due to gross error. And that happened in the structural steel erection, the steel supply, and then under the tile work, under technically under category thirteen. Their error had to do with, they took the verbiage of the alternate and included the entire floor level of the PV station in their alternate price, not in their base, not in the base bid, which it should have been, so. The other ones we have bold are just identifying that with acceptance of alternates one and two, the low bidder changes. So, I know commercial flooring services is one, Sean's Cabinetry is another, and Pho B Electric is another. So, they were, they were close bids and coming down to alternates that affected the little bit, and so. Otherwise, the rest of the items down below, you know, we got our contingency, general conditions, CM, architect fees. There were some items that we identified as, they were either sole source or they were smaller items and/or items that we did not have detail on to get, that we included down below. The reason is roofing, you have an existing garland system, we were adding an addition and putting roof curbs on your existing roof. It was by default sole source, we didn't, we didn't wanna put it under the pretense that this was out for public bid, when in fact, we know who needs to be doing the work. So, we solicited a quote from Granite City. The foot applied flooring came up during bidding. There was, we had one shower, one, or my four shower was a wall, it was so minor, the painters were raising a fuss that it was actually included under the painting package. And so we just said, we'll get, we'll get a separate quote for it, it's just a few thousand dollar item there. The signage, just, there's not enough detail worked out, that would include your interior door signage, how you're gonna name things specifically. There wasn't enough detail that, that contractors could, but we'll get quotes on those.
So, is that just question, so that's just gonna be how you letter the doors, you mean, or the outside of the building?
There, yes. There's some pin mounted letters, whether they're die cut aluminum or anodized or whatever.
So, there's different.
Well, back and forth, I think there was a little difference between what Michael from old was thinking as far as pin mounted lettering versus yours, where it's just a little flag sign, I mean, there's apples.
Okay. Are we doing questions now, or do you want me to wait?
You can question by all means, ask it as you go through.
So, what kind of flooring are we, I'm interested in things like this. So, commercial flooring, what kind of flooring are we looking at, like, is it carpet in some rooms?
Carpet, carpet tile.
All different things?
Yeah, there's some vinyl tiles, some LVT, course bathrooms and stuff are, are tiled, there's actually some areas that are actually salvaging because your tile, your flooring got put in here in the last few years, so.
Like public house, maybe?
Yeah, it's existing carpet, there's probably like twelve hundred yards of carpet that.
Yeah, we did that not very long.
Or carpet that you lay down in with carpet squares.
Okay.
You basically salvage and pull them back up, you can reapply them, so.
All right, thank you.
Building automation, temp controls, that was down to two individuals, these are gonna be climate makers, Johnson Controls. And we split them up that you could have had either one on one building, one on the other, ended up being that climate makers was what low on, on low. Sound masking, this was an item that, I'm not sure if it's needed, but we did carry a budget through. Electronic access control, that's, once again, that was a sole source with ProTech. The video surveillance was actually, could be done by either ProTech or ACR controls. And so we solicited quotes from either of them, ProTech was the full quote on that. Intrusion detection system, that's your existing, we couldn't get a number on that, that's, that number in there is to replace the system. You have an antiquated older intrusion, this is the panic buttons. And so nobody could expand off of that existing without having the hardware and stuff. So, we did put a budget in there in case it needed to be replaced, but it's one of those things that it's not a large scope, if you just expand and adding a few push buttons. But it's maybe finding something you can actually put the system in or actually be able to modify to exist. The detention intercom systems, ACR controls, that's, that's the expansion of your existing, that's sole source item as well. And then, then we just carry through the, the budgeting non-construction items. If you see the, the three items there, the conference room, the surveillance and the interview rooms is zero, it's not that it's not in the project, it's actually already was incorporated either in the contractor's bid above or one of the electronic access controls. So, I just wanted to identify it's not a zero, like, it's not happening, it's just showing it moved up out of, what was in the non-construction item before up there. Project budget, you see, we're twelve, seven, five, three and thirteen million respectively, much better than I think the last time we were here. I think we were in that fourteen million six hundred, I think is where we were hoping for. Back then, I, some of the things I think we happened that you don't see in this line item anymore, we had about a six hundred thousand dollar design bid contingency. We don't need that anymore, we're beyond that step, so there's about six hundred thousand. And then, the biggest question we had back then was the mechanical electrical, we were working off narratives, so basically a paragraph or two. Well, if you see the plans and specs now, you've got four spec books, five spec books that are about this thick and plans that are about that thick that provide a level of detail. So, some of these areas where we have quote unquote light remodeling that we were going into this in, we may have all figured out in the mechanical, signed in this project, mechanical and electrical per se. The other part of it, I think, that plays into a role in this combination is you look at the, the number of bids received. If you take the second bidders across the board, you add it almost eight hundred thousand dollars to the project, just that difference. You're, you take the average bid across the board, you hear about one point five million added to this project, so. You know, like I said, the competition, I think, drove some of it, I could do several contractors, and Jim went through and called every one of these contractors, including the first bidder, second bidders in a lot of cases. Scrutinizing, making sure they dotted out the i's, crossed all the t's. So, put that, like, to open up for questions and.
This is a small item, it's only thirty thousand dollars, but I've been through an asbestos abatement in my work life. We don't really know how much asbestos we're gonna bump into?
Well, Joel, Joel had field environmental here, I think it was not last week, maybe the week before, and they took samplings of everything that was suspect. And that landed back down to the old auditorium in the annex where the band risers are. The floor tile looked suspect and there's some spray texture on the, the front of the wall, the, the lower part that's there. So, knowing what that runs for chemical abatement, I think you had about ninety-eight hundred dollars for the inspection testing from field. And then there's roughly a little over twenty grand to do the abatement. It's, if that's the only volume, your twenty grand should be more than enough. And then in areas you're not disturbing or, or not gonna be demolishing or renovating, I don't think they did any of that testing, but I don't think they have test results back. I think this week, later this week, I thought you'd have test results back. And then with test results, we'll give you a quantity and then you can kind of come up with a budget, so.
And, and with the amount of work that's been done, you know, over the years, you know, the, the annex is the one area that really hasn't had any sort of renovations since it was constructed, or at least since the early nineties. And so, we feel pretty confident with the rest of the buildings that it's been abated already.
Because in the past, the ideal way to take care of asbestos was just to encapsulate it.
Encapsulate it, yeah, you can encapsulate it, you don't touch it, you don't have to touch it.
But if now we start touching it.
Yeah, you start to touch it, then you can get into the flooring system, we talked, I talked to Joel, you know, the question is, what's the new flooring going on? So, you can have two ways to abate a floor tile, you chemically abate it, where you leave residue on the floor with the asbestos is coming. And then you get into the issue of floor covering warranties with contractors and, and manufacturers are being big on the moisture contents and stuff like that, so. This was gonna turn into mainly mechanical storage space, so chemical abatement is perfectly fine because you're gonna leave it bare concrete, so.
I just had a bad experience.
And where are we looking at, or is this?
This is in, in the annex, there's that tiered.
Yep.
That, that's the rule. And then in the lower part of the tier, if you look above those closets, there's spray texture on the wall. Those were the, they were the suspect, they, they have tests will confirm, but we base our quantities that both those will come back positive, so.
Eden, Eden Valley bought an old house. Our abatement was thirty-four grand.
It's, it's just.
Thought they had a war again, huh?
Of course, I owe them about six, six, about six and a half.
I don't even, I.
I see about a buck fifty more to take it out than it does when it was going in though.
The, the first preliminary, they said, oh, it's not too bad, they sent an email, it's not too bad, it won't be too bad at all, get it cleaned out and we'll come back. And they came back, uh, thirty-four grand.
I'm, I'm guessing, they've done a lot of work over there when, actually when we moved over there, so I'm assuming a lot of that's been addressed, probably, right?
With the exception of the annex. And that's what I'm saying, the annex is the one part of the building where we are.
Right.
So, a lot of concrete.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it shouldn't be too bad.
So, of your bids and, and all of the equipment that has to be procured, is, do you see any procurement issues? In getting chillers or anything like that that's needed, is there gonna be something that could hold our project up?
I don't, that's one of the things I talk about when I, when I get ahold of contractors and whatnot, there's really nothing, air handlers, things like that are long lead items. But it just, it just happens that the way we phased the schedules to take in that, take that into account. So, a lot of the things that might be eight or nine months to get aren't gonna happen for eight or nine months anyways, that's all.
Some of the phasing we did, the initial stuff, it's the housing services lighter remodel area, so. We, we did switch it there somewhere along the lines, I can't remember when we met Andrew and went through the phasing schedule and, and we take into account, okay, if you're gonna be. We were looking, originally started the annex, if you maybe recall at one point, well, the annex has air handling equipment, well, we didn't wanna be in that same position, let's start some areas where we can work it into the, the phasing scheduling, so.
I, I had a couple of questions here. I, you, you addressed a little bit that there are some categories where there were no bids.
Yes.
Given. And then such as the elevator number nineteen, only one.
Yep.
Bid, and same with the door frames, number twenty-seven. Those are some pretty high, high ticket categories. What, what will be done, we, we just have to accept that there was only one bid, or how, how can we know?
Well, the answer to that, yes, and it was out, we contacted every elevator company that we thought to be involved. Now, granted, there's only a limited selection, and I do have existing elevator service through right now.
I, I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
So, you only got, I mean, typically you only see maybe one, two or three bids in regards to the elevator side of it. The doors and hardware, once again, it's a limited group, we were hoping to see Twin City Hardware and Candle Door, either of them bid it. So, you know, mid-central door, in part of this proximity, they're, they're by far the closest out of St. Cloud. But the elevator, once again, we, we had it in that hundred and fifty, sixty range for the elevator. So, we go back and we're presenting, we looked at it in our estimate and say, okay, yes, that, that's focused in the line.
Okay, because I look at, when I first got this and I sat down, okay, well, let's look, oh, there's three bids there and three bids there, and I'm going. And from the low to the high, there's three hundred thousand or, you know, they, they, are we truly, are these people truly doing an apples for apples comparison? Because I'm thinking, here's one million four hundred thousand for gypsum board versus eight hundred thousand.
Like, I can, I can tell you, first of all, regardless of the elevators, there's only four, maybe five potential elevator bidders, and they usually come in within a few grand of each other. It's a really tight market, so I'm not too concerned about that one. With gypsum board, that category, that category, it counts the framing of the walls, there's a whole bunch of stuff under that gypsum board category. Part of my job is to field questions as the bid goes on, and I can tell you, there's some guys that get this at the last minute and look at it and throw a number at the wall. There's some guys that really have a thorough understanding of the project documents. And so, I can tell you that the, the, a lot of that spread is, you know, accounts for that, just how much they know about the job. Some of them just are high. There's also some guys that, they're busy, they don't need to work quite as much as others, and they put a much higher number at it, and if they get it, great, they'll figure out how to do it. And if they don't, you know.
No biggie.
Sure, because boy, every, almost every category, as I went through here, there's a huge disparity between the low bid and the high bid, and I'm thinking, wow.
Yeah, so, and one of our, our jobs is to vet these contracts. We don't want a contractor entering into a contract for the work because what they're gonna get is a contract that states, this is the work scope. That's per categories, per plants, per specifications, and if you got a mistake, we wanna know it now, so you can have your chance to withdraw. And there's, well, for example, if you look at the steel supply, I think we went back to him six different times. We knew the low bidder missed the steel plate, and we went through to the point when we even checked with the third bidder, all right, how many tons of steel did you have? He comes back, we had twenty tons. If we go back to J R K, how many tons of steel did you have? We came up with about nineteen and a half tons, well, they were, they were looking at the same project.
Sure.
But.
Because it just, it just makes me nervous, they say, well, we'll, we'll give it, we'll give it to Ben. And then Marshall, you know, they, they had included things that Ben had forgotten and then.
They're all gonna get the contract that says they're including it, so.
Yeah, so we, we vet them, they, they have to answer barrage of questions, I make sure that they have the, the whole scope included. But once that contract is signed, they're, they're not, you know, they're on the hook for that whole scope of work. So, if they did make a mistake at that point and it still wasn't caught, then that's just, that's on them. They're gonna be providing this whole scope of work one way or another.
And put the performance and payment on to back it up.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
General conditions, is that just a ten percent?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a combination of, we, we broke it down kind of a monthly thing based on twenty month schedule.